Thank you so much and we might commence our next session. And I'd like to welcome our next witnesses here today, Ms Nicola McDougall, who's the Chair of the Property Investment Professionals of Australia, and also Mr Ben Kingsley, the National Board Chairperson of the Property Investors Council of Australia, who are both appearing via video conference today, as is our Deputy Chair and Member for Parramatta, Donna Davis. Welcome to you both. Thank you both for appearing before the committee today and giving us your time. I'd like to note that for today, I understand that you've been provided with the committee's Terms of Reference and information about the standing orders for witnesses. Did you have any questions about those?
No.
Great, and obviously you're appearing remotely, but there will be video taken of this that may be used on social media just to say to let the committee staff know if you have any concerns about that. And as, great, thank you. And then as part of the formalities, I'd ask that each of you state your name, the capacity in which you appear, and also take the oath or affirmation, which I believe you should have a copy with you. If you don't, I can read it out for you. Ms McDougall, that's totally fine. But maybe Mr Kingsley, have you got yours there?
I don't actually have it.
Let me do that for you.
Read it out happily.
Yeah, great. Can I just check whether or not you want the oath or the affirmation? If both of you can indicate.
I'm easy.
Just to clarify, sorry.
Actually, I've got them all loaded here, actually.
You've got it? Okay, and just to clarify, the oath is before God and the affirmation is not, Mr Kingsley. That's the context.
Affirmation not, thank you.
Great, thank you. So I'll start with you, Mr Kingsley. If you can state your name and the capacity in which you appear, and then I'll read you the affirmation.
Sure. Ben Kingsley, the Chair of the Property Investors Council of Australia, a not-for-profit association representing property investors.
Great, thank you. And if you can repeat after me, I, your name, and then do hereby affirm and declare that the evidence I shall give.
I, Ben Kingsley, do hereby confirm the evidence that I shall give.
Before this committee shall be the truth.
Before this committee shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Great, thank you, Mr Kingsley. And Ms McDougall, I think you said you've now located yours. So did you want to go ahead and state your name, the capacity, and take the oath or affirmation?
Sure, I'm Nicola McDougall, the Chair of the Property Investment Professionals of Australia, or PIPA. We're a non-profit membership association representing people employed in the property investment profession. I, Nicola McDougall, do hereby affirm and declare that the evidence I shall give before this committee shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Great, thank you both for that. Can I ask if either of you or both of you wish to make opening statements briefly before we move to questions from the committee members?
Yes, I'd like to make an opening statement, Chair.
Great, okay, both of you. We'll go to you, Mr Kingsley first, and then come to you, Ms McDougall, after that.
Sure. So PIPA, thanks to the committee for the invitation to appear at this hearing today. We'd also like to acknowledge that, given the current economic environment, we recognise that there are vulnerable members of the New South Wales community who are doing it tough and experiencing rental affordability challenges. We appear here today on behalf of our thousands of members and representing the hundreds of thousands of property investors who either live and/or invest their money and time in operating their small private rental accommodation businesses in New South Wales. They are the same everyday Australians who have chosen to invest hundreds of billions of dollars into providing private rental accommodation in the state of New South Wales. They do this to provide financial security for themselves and their families. And in so doing, they also directly inject billions of dollars into state government revenue coffers via stamp duty and also land taxes, and indirectly via hidden taxes and charges that are passed on to them via developments. These funds go a long way in helping to provide healthcare, education, and private housing for New South Wales. Their actions in running their small businesses also generate income and capital gains income, which also helps to provide that healthcare, education, infrastructure, and public housing across Australia. Finally, if their small business goes well enough, it also means that they will forego access to government support services, such as a pension in retirement, as they will be self-funded retirees. Throughout the course of these hearings and the many inquiries into the no grounds evictions and into tenancy reforms in general, there has been no evidence of broad or systemic abuse towards the millions of tenants in New South Wales. Yes, there is evidence of isolated incidents of owners behaving poorly, as there are also isolated instances of renters behaving poorly. But again, I reiterate, there has been no evidence of systemic abuse. Landlords don't evict tenants for no reason at all. There is always a reason. Yet without any significant research or data into why landlords evict tenants in the first place, the Government of New South Wales is willing to risk reducing current rental supply and reducing demand for future supply. And this will only hurt tenants more than it will help them. I look forward to discussing the data with you further at this hearing. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr Kingsley. And I'll go to you, Ms McDougall.
Thank you, and thanks for the opportunity to appear today. PIPA's research showed that 12% of investors sold at least one property last year, with 20% selling at least one in New South Wales. Only 24% of those properties were bought by other investors nationally, down from 33% the year before. As a comparison, 40% of investors had sold in Queensland and 31% in Victoria. Those are both states with perceived current or former anti-investor policies and taxes. Our research last year showed that New South Wales was seen as actually quite accommodating of investors. However, Victoria was seen as the least accommodating, and Victoria has the most depressed capital city property market in the nation at present. Interestingly, South Australia and Western Australia were viewed as the most accommodating for investors last year. Both of these states are experiencing booming property markets with significant stamp duty and land tax receipts because of it. Our research last week, sorry, last year, also found that while the majority of investors had experienced holding cost increases of between 25% to 100%, 83% of those investors had passed on less than 25% of these increases to their tenants. Research also shows that mortgage repayments have increased on average about 60% since the pandemic. To put that into perspective personally, the repayments on my investment unit have increased by $1,600 per month, and the rent has increased by about $700 per month. Add in higher body corporate fees and council rates, and I have negative cash flow of about $1,200 per month from that property, and I'm seriously considering selling it. I have already sold one of my investment properties, and that was bought by a homeowner. The repayments on my home loan have also increased by more than $2,000 a month. The rent on my investment unit has only increased 22% in the past 11 years, or 2% per year, which, as you know, is well below inflation because of an oversupply of units in that area for a number of years. These sorts of numbers are not uncommon for investors, many of whom have never owned an investment property in a higher interest rate environment. For many, the numbers just don't add up anymore. At the same time, there has been a raft of rental reforms over recent years. Our research last year found that 47% of investors who had sold a property in the previous 12 months indicated it was due to governments increasing or threatening to increase taxes, duties, and levies. Other reform-related reasons for selling included changing tenancy legislation for 43% of those investors, rental freezes, as well as rental increase limits or caps. While it's understandable that this committee is seeking stability for tenants as a representative for the property investment profession and for investors, we're also seeking stability in legislation for property owners. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those opening remarks. And I'll now go to questions from the committee. I'll kick off, but just to let you both know that it's absolutely fine for you to take questions on notice or to respond briefly and then say you would like to provide more detail on notice to any of the questions that are asked for you here today. I might, if I can, just start with both of you to ask if you can provide a bit more detail about the memberships of your organisations, the structure of it, how many members you have, are they institutional members or individual members? And I guess if you could outline sort of any fees there are involved in becoming members or any sort of, and what the governance structure is, just so we can have a sense of where you both sit in relation to that and the constituencies that you represent, that would be most appreciated. I might go to you, Ms McDougall, first, and then come to you, Mr Kingsley.
Sure.
PIPA is a non-profit membership association, so very similar to other membership associations around the nation for whatever industry. We were actually set up in 2005. The property investment advice sector is not a regulated sector. So we were actually established by our founders nearly 20 years ago, you know, as a membership body to help those that were, you know, I guess you could say the good guys and good girls in the property investment sector as a profession, which unfortunately previously had not been, had a very good reputation. So we were established to become a membership association where our members voluntarily agree to abide by a code of conduct. And then they also undertake professional training, which is provided by PIPA, to raise the standards of the people that are working in property investment advice. So our membership encompasses anyone in property investment advice around the nation. They're generally small, but small to medium businesses. We have, you know, for example, buyers, agents, selling agents, mortgage brokers, conveyances, property investment advisors, qualified property investment advisors if they have completed the necessary training. We have builders, we have people that are working in property research and analysis. So anyone who is working in property investment advice and is working actually in the profession of property investment, that's who we represent. And a key part, I guess, of our history has long been representing our members at a federal level because of the lack of regulation in the property investment advice space. So that's where we, what we've been doing for nearly the last 20 years. We have hundreds of members across the nation. As I say, they are all small and medium businesses. Often, they could be, you know, a small buyer's agency that might have a couple of stars. And then, and they do pay a fee, a small fee. If you're, most of our members pay about $595 a year to become members of our association. And we are completely self-funded.
Okay, and self-funded just through those membership fees?
And also, and also the sale of our qualified property investment advisor training program,
Okay, yeah.
which, as I said at the outset, was thankfully established by our founders many years ago because we really wanted to raise the standards of the people that were, the educational standards of people that were employed in the sector.
And can I just ask a follow-up to that before I come to you, Mr Kingsley? Just in relation to having an understanding of what, I appreciate you said you have hundreds of members across the country, and there's a diverse sort of scale and size of that. I totally appreciate that. I wonder if you could provide some detail of how much of a percentage of coverage you think you have for the, for the sector as a whole versus where that's at? I appreciate that may be a bit of a how-long-is-a-string question, but just trying to get a bit of a sense, even if you can give me a sense in sort of one sector or in New South Wales, what sort of area of coverage that would be?
I mean, it's very difficult because obviously our membership is for people that actually work in property investment advice. So it's actually a very niche part of the industry. So, you know, just because someone's a buyer's agent, for example, in New South Wales, does not mean that they are in the provision of property investment advice. Generally speaking, a lot of buyer's agents are working with homeowners, home buyers. So they are technically, you know, not in the field of property investment advice. Similarly, mortgage brokers, you know, we have many mortgage brokers as members, but they would be a very small percentage of the general mortgage broker who is out there working day in and day out. So we are, I guess we are quite a niche part of the industry, but we're a vital one and a really important part of, I guess, the more sophistication of property investment advice over the years. We have worked very hard to raise the standards of people who are working in property investment advice because clearly we are out there providing consumer protection via increasing the standards of people that are working in the sector because unfortunately, property investment has long been the domain of spruikers. And that was part of the reason why we were originally founded nearly 20 years ago was to really try to prevent, you know, more and more consumers being targeted by spruikers by creating a subset or an industry body as well, but also a profession that have higher educational standards and more consumer protection for investors.
Great, thank you so much for that. Mr Kingsley, did you want to come to provide your response to that question?
Yeah, sure. So, so PIPA, for short, is run by property investors for the interests and advocacy of property investors. So we are not influenced, as for our constitution, in regards to lobbying groups or anything like that. Our membership is $5 for one year, paid by the property investor, or $20 for five years. Currently, we have just under 3,000 members across Australia, and that number is obviously growing as we need to do more and more advocacy work for situations like this. We have, sorry, also, just for the record, we do have associate members. There are, they are totaling 34, and so they've got no voting rights, but they might be businesses that do operate in the property investment space.
Great, and so, and you're relying on those members, very minimal membership fees? I'm guessing you're a volunteer-based organisation, is that right?
We, yes, no one gets paid. We've got no government funding, we've got nothing. We run on the smell of an oily rag.
Yep, yep, all right. And it seems your membership fees are the same as those for young greens wanting to join. So we're aligned on our $5 membership fee. Can I?
Actually, I understand as well, we are, as well, have a, mostly voluntary as well. We do have 1.8 of a full-time staff member. At PIPA, we have a couple of paid contractors, but generally speaking, it's always been volunteers. But I will add, actually, we do have a couple of corporate sponsors now as well, which just started last year. But again, you know, it has been very, very grassroots for many years and run generally by, you know, by altruistic people in the industry who are giving back.
Thanks, Ms McDougall. If you are able to provide details on notice on the corporate sponsorship and how that sort of works, that would be useful. And then, Mr Kingsley, just to say, happy for you to take on notice. It'd be really great to get a sense of how many of those members are in New South Wales, if you can provide that breakdown.
They are the bulk of our membership. And from memory, I don't have that on hand right now, but I think it's about around 1,000, so I'll take that on notice.
Great, thank you. And I understand I might go to the Member for Cessnock first for questions now just because I think the Deputy Chair might be having some technical challenges. So I may go to you first.
Right.
And then, apologies, Member Cessnock, I thought you might have also been aware of that. But I will come to you first, and then I'll go to the Member Willby, and then come to the Member for Parramatta.
Sure, thank you very much. Ms McDougall, I guess you described your own personal investment situation scenario, and I don't want to dig deeper into that, that's your own personal business. But if you could talk more broadly about investors as you understand it, I mean, do people get involved in investing and becoming landlords because they've got some deep interest in housing people? Or do they get involved and become landlords because they're trying to grow wealth?
I think, you know, certainly the private investor market has really, well, certainly increased clearly from the mid-'90s for a couple of decades there. And, you know, that may have been because some policies that came in at that time. You know, for those of us that are investors, and let's be clear that the ATO data consistently shows that around 70% of investors own one property. So we're not talking about people, you know, we often see in the media stories about investors, and I don't like using the word landlord to be gentle and nonspecific, talking about investors that own six or 12 or 20 properties. They are the exception rather than the rule. And the most, most investors are like me that might own one or two properties. And for me, I guess, as a single woman, I always wanted to be able to probably improve my financial future later on down the line. I don't want to be reliant on the pension in retirement. And that's predominantly why I have done it. And the vast majority, when we have researched investors, and we do that regularly, the vast majority of people are wanting to do it to be self-funded in retirement, so they won't be drawing a pension. And it's actually for them about being able to improve their financial position over the long term. You know, thankfully, property investors have become more educated over the years. The property investment profession has become more educated too. And that allows investors to make, you know, smarter decisions. But fundamentally, you know, we are, we are taking all the risks here. And I guess, like anything, when it's got a significant amount of money involved, we're talking about hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, clearly there has to be a return at some point.
Mr Kingsley, did you want to comment?
Yeah, absolutely. The research is pretty clear that, yes, they're interested, they're running a small business, whether that's a side business from their day-to-day duties. And they are absolutely looking for a return on that investment. And that, that would be considered as part of a risk-adjusted assessment that they would be making. So, you know, ultimately, individuals and households can choose to invest in equities, bonds, term deposits, and/or direct residential property. And we do know that, from the research, that a lot of investors do like to invest in residential property because they can understand it. Usually, there's no significant changes that go on, so they've got reliability in terms of the risk profiling. That is currently under debate, and we can see that in the data now around some of the reform agendas that are going on are causing uncertainty and distrust in terms of the confidence of investors. And that's absolutely supported by the data, if you look at the ATO data there as well. So, but make no mistake, it is a choice that they get to make with their own wallets as to where they inject their tens of billions of dollars. And, you know, we know that predominantly, they're around 30% of the marketplace.
Ms McDougall, I take on board your, your comment and correction about the term landlords, and I'll change my ways as best I can. I apologise if it's a slip.
As a hardcore feminist, I'm fine with landlords.
I, in terms of interrogating your data for both of you, for me, there's a little bit of, you know, the correlation doesn't necessarily mean causation. Full disclosure, I'm an investor, I've got a couple of investment properties, so I've got tenants, the whole bit. I mean, there's a whole bunch of things happening in the market, particularly over the last three or four or five years since COVID, that might, might also play into the increase in number of people selling investment properties to, you know, to free up. And I think, Ms McDougall, you described the situation yourself personally. So I'm just having trouble deciphering some of the data without obviously reflecting on the many, many, many other factors at play in that same time period. Do you have a comment about that?
In regards to our research that we conducted in 2022 with investors, the number one reason why they said that they sold was to make the most of rising market conditions. So in my statement at the beginning, when I talked about our research last year, you know, the number one, the number, the top reasons why they were selling had shifted within a 12-month period. But in 2022, when we asked them exactly the same questions, the number one reason was to make the most of rising market conditions. So the motivations for sell, selling do have been changed depending on a number of factors, including market conditions. And if we think about when our research was conducted last year, market conditions were actually quite flat, but the year before, they were not. So there are a variety of reasons why investors sell. What's important to be clear about here is that until relatively recently, and I've been on record saying this a few times, you know, no one actually really took any notice of what investment sales activity was. It was only a couple of years ago when, for example, PIPA, we started doing it, obviously, PIPA as well, but also some of the bigger property data houses out there too, started actually tracking investor sales activity on a, you know, on a greater level. Because previously, there probably, there had been, there had been an equilibrium, right? Prior to COVID, we saw those vacancy rates generally, you know, there were some local fluctuations depending on various supply, things that were happening. But generally, we had a really stable rental market. And so no one really gave, really cared about what investors, whether they were selling or buying. But because of the situation, the rental crisis that we have now, this is why we are actually getting all these, you know, metrics or this data available, but it actually didn't exist before.
Ms McDougall, and just in terms of the data that you've provided, I mean, I can only assume that people were able to choose multiple answers when they responded because that adds up to 180% or something.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, so I guess, Mr Kingsley, can I ask you? You mentioned right at the start, you know, some landlords are bad, just the same as some tenants are bad. I've had some bad tenants, and it's been a very expensive experience for me. But renters have a register of bad behaviour. Would you support a landlord register of bad behaviour?
I'd like to see the detail of it, but I'm not, I'm not against the idea that, that it can happen. A name and shame site, if it had some sort of independence attached to it, but then, you know, you've got the bureaucracy associated with that. So I tend to feel like, you know, these are small business operators. Their tenant is their client. They want to have a great working relationship with that client. And if that client also does the right thing as per the agreement, then, you know, we believe that around 95% of most tenancy relationships are at a satisfactory level in the sense that they get safe and quiet enjoyment of the lease arrangement. And obviously, the owner gets a reasonable rate of return to obviously be, you know, tying that capital up. I think, I think what we need to understand here is that as much as the sensationalist quotes that are going on and a lot of the narrative around anti-property investor, and we take great offence of that, it's insulting, and it also creates distrust in future investment into the property space. So if you can't get reliable regulations, you're not going to throw hundreds of thousands of dollars at investment properties. So, so let's be, let's be reasonable here in the sense that what does constitute reasonable grounds? And, you know, if those reasonable grounds are too unreasonable, the real question is, is it going to be 2%, 5%, 10%, or 20% of investors that choose not to invest or to divest themselves of New South Wales? Now, none of us know the answer to that question. But what we do know through the data is that there are instances, and I'm talking instances in the thousands of transactions now that we're collecting, where the decisions by the government of the day to provide certain regulations or reforms are seeing some investors tap out, and they're now seeing borderless investing being more and more a thing. And I think we're naive to think that even if we get uniformity across all states and territories, maybe because we have a certain political party in power at that time, you're also going to be realising that that tens of billions of dollars of investment that you talk about each year flowing in from literally, you know, there's probably around 100,000 transactions for investors each year in the property market, where that money goes is going to go to states and territories that have the most favourable conditions to attract and incentivise them to invest. What you're not going to get through risk of financial penalty or through the risk of not being in control of your, you run the risk of divesting or moving that money from one location to another. And that's, that's what you're attempting here. You're attempting to try and thread the needle in terms of trying to get the balance right between the responsibilities of the landlord or the small business private rental accommodation providers, I refer to them, and also the tenant. And so I think that's what, that's what I'm really concerned about in terms of, now, could there have also been other tenants that have had bad relationships and are worried about sort of documenting their frustration with their landlord? Yes, but where we're at right now, based even on the data quoted by the Chair, if we're talking about 13,011 evictions, as reported by the New South Wales Civil and Administrative Tribunal, against, say, 2 million property investors, that's 0.65% of all renters. Now, let's say we do, let's say we do a ratio of 1.6% property people, people per property, that's 1%. So what you're, what you're trying to do here is introduce legislation that has absolutely no upside at all for the small business owner, definitely upside for the tenant potentially, but that's what you're risking here. So if it's 2%.
Mr Kingsley, can I just jump in? And, sorry, Member for Cessnock, just to clarify on this, can I just jump in? Because I'm, I'm just finding it a bit hard to sort of understand two sort of lines of thought coming through in your submission and then, and what's being provided. On one hand, and I appreciate in your opening remarks and your submission, you've said, you know, asking people that are investors, there's an intention to say that people, you know, if the relationship is good, if rent is being paid on time, that, you know, that there's no intention for landlords to evict a tenant. But then, on the other hand, you seem to be highly or strongly objecting to this reform. I'm finding it different, difficult to reconcile how simultaneously investors are not doing this already and how putting in this protective mechanism in place in legislation to provide renters with more security is going to have these disastrous consequences. I can't reconcile these two things in my head, and I wonder if you could take us through the logic of. the logic of that. Maybe it has something to do with marriage and divorce as another example, but let's not go there for now.
Well, I think the marriage to divorce one is really interesting when we-
I said, let's not go there for now, let's go back to the other one first, shall we? And then if we want, if we get time for marriage and divorce later, we can chat about it.
And they have a loving relationship. But let's go, let's go also to HR, let's go to HR legislation as well, where in the first six months or 12 months, you can set up a probation period. Now, under that probation period, the employee does not need to give a reason as to why they've decided not to continue the employment. So what we've got to be realistic and have some common sense about is that there absolutely is good working relationships and there's sometimes irreconcilable differences or differences of opinion, or in some cases, difference of ideology in terms of how this plays out. So how you reconcile this is, you're right, that it's not going to be 100% of people just packing up, you know, their kit and then leaving the New South Wales property investment market. That is not going to happen. That's not what we're talking about here. But what we are talking about, people who under behavioural economics, through endowment effect and also through loss aversion, and we know the combination of those two things towards an owner or something, they will, a percentage of them will sell up and/or a percentage of them will say, I'm not going to invest my hundreds of thousands of dollars into this particular market. So the question for the government of the day is simple. Do you want to lose 2%, 5%, 10% or 20%? So if that's, we talk about a million properties, to round it up, that's roughly what's in New South Wales in terms of the rental stock. So that's 20,000 less properties you want.
That 2 million people.
No, 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 no. There's, if you look at the census data and you extrapolate that out from 2021, there was 944,000 rental properties provided by private rental accommodation providers. And if you look at that run rate compared to 2016 to 2001 census data, you'll get over a million in terms of where it should be today. So you've got, you've got the million properties, you've got 2 million renters, that's based on obviously size of, of number of people inside a property. So, so you're talking about 2%. If that's 20,000, if it's 5%, it's 50,000. We won't know the number because in a lot of respects, a lot of, you know, mum and dad property investors, they don't even know this might even be occurring. And so they will find out in due course. And that's the lag effect that we've also seen happen in Victoria.
But if, but if you're, if you're members, just to clarify, so I appreciate there's a lag, there's a whole issue with the fact that we don't register landlords in this, in this state, there's a whole issue with the fact that you can't, you're acting as a small business, you're acting for profit, you're doing all of these things, but it's completely lacking in any registration or ability to communicate. We saw that during Covid. There's absolutely a need to improve the way that we're collecting that data and I hope we'd all agree on that. But I think the bit that I can't understand is the sort of argument that is, this is not going to be an issue because people are already good landlords, they're already treating their tenants, they're not evicting them for no reason, the system is working well and somehow this reform is going to be so significant that it's going to cause people to evacuate from the market when you're suggesting that people might not even know that this reform is on the table. So I can't, I can't reconcile these elements in my head. Ms McDougall, I'll come to you first and then let you weigh in and then I'll come to the member for Willoughby to ask some questions and then we'll continue on from there.
I just wanted to, you know, answer to that question from my point of view. It's also about perception, like property investment is based on confidence, you know, obviously there's the financial ability to do it. But generally speaking, most investors are the most active when, when conditions are favourable and that could be legislation or it could be market conditions. So, you know, in response to that, it doesn't really matter about what the impact of it potentially could be, it's about how it's perceived by investors. And, and I think, you know, if the last few years have showed us anything, certainly in Victoria and certainly here in Queensland, investors vote for their feet when they feel like they're being attacked and regardless of whether the policy or the reform is a big one or a small one, right? Unfortunately, many investors react emotionally and while there seems to be a cohort out there that think it's great, that investors are deserting the market, one only needs to look at the rental, the rental vacancy rate around the nation and the fact that it's entrenched to know that, you know, and there are myriad issues with the rental market at the moment, but the fact that there's more investors that are selling them, you know, that are replacing them, that is a serious problem. And when we have such-
Can I just pick up on that point just quickly, just in relation to, because I think it's really good to get to the bottom of this. I note in the, on page one of the PIPA submission, Ms McDougall, you refer to the, sorry, I'm just going through it here, I've got the wrong one in front of me, there we go. You refer to sort of how did we get here? And it's sort of on page one, it says, the evaporation of available rental properties did not happen overnight. I would argue that there's, that houses don't evaporate, that, that actually they're not evaporating, they're either being bought by another investor or they're being bought by a homeowner. And I just wonder, in your experience, how many houses sort of have you seen evaporate entirely in that space?
Well, I would have to get back to on that, but just an understanding of how we got here. From 2015 onwards, there was some, there was APRA lending restrictions that were in play, predominantly because there was a huge number, an abnormal number of investment investors active in New South Wales. So APRA brought in some lending restrictions. And from that moment on, when you actually look at the ABS data from 2015, you actually saw lending to investors continue to track down for many years. It's only just recently returned to more historical levels. So I often say that it's kind of like a perfect storm of factors that's happened to create this rental crisis around Australia. And it partly began in 2015 when the normal volume of investors couldn't access lending. And you're talking about even myself, for example, you know, here, sitting here in Brisbane, our rental, our, like, our property market was very flat, we had falling rents, we had an oversupply of properties, but the rent, the lending restrictions that APRA instigated were actually applied around the nation, even though the issue at the time was in New South Wales. So we saw a huge volume of investors who would normally be transacting or getting into the market, that, that just didn't happen. And then obviously we've had a huge number of things happen since then, including, including Covid, obviously the, the huge number of overseas migrants into the country. So when you add on top of that, all of the investors who have also been selling, it's a situation that we've found ourselves in now. Like many disasters, it has a number of moving parts that have come together at the same time.
Indeed, indeed. The member for Willoughby. And just to, just to check with you both, I appreciate we were supposed to finish, but just to give others questions, are you happy to go for another five to 10 minutes just so we can get through? Thank you both so much, I appreciate it. Member for Willoughby.
Five to 10 minutes, all right.
Not five to 10 minutes, just for you. We haven't heard from the deputy chair as well.
Well, I'm very conscious of that, but, but I note we've been going for quite some time. It's 12:32, according to our schedule, it's lunchtime and this is now my first opportunity to ask a question. So I do note that with some concern, but let's spend the time that-
I haven't asked one either, Mr-
Yes, noted, yes, Julie noted. Others, others have been very enthusiastic in their questioning of these witnesses. Can I first ask about data? Because any legislative response should be proportionate to the problem. How much, I've been trying to ask a lot of witnesses how prevalent this is, how much of a problem it is, how much is happening in the real world. We heard the other day, I think it's broadly consistent with what you've brought forward to us, there's about a million renting households in New South Wales and we heard that there would be 28,000 no grounds evictions each year. Have you got any sense for data on your side, recognising, I think that came from the tenants' union? And to me, that speaks to a concern about the relativity of the proposed response here and I welcome your comment.
Tim, I'm very happy to pick up on that, on that comment as well. All of the research and data that we've tried to collect in regards to complaints and the like, do not get us past 3% of the total rental pool in terms of this being a serious problem. So even, even the unreported stuff, if we were to double that or even triple that, none of the evidence that we can find can support less than 90% of rental and, and small business owners' relationships being acceptable. I'm not saying they have to be great and they're in loving relationships, that's not where we're going here. But that is, that is the point we're trying to make. Is this sensible, proportionate response in a 180-degree flip of the legislation when a lot of renters aren't necessarily there by choice? There are many renters in by choice and also you've got to think about obviously that human capital movement and the critical need to have rental supply for growing economies or whatever that may look like and obviously for new arrivals into Australia. So I think that is a concern for us in the sense that it is disproportionate in terms of the problem that we're trying to deal with here.
Thank you. If there's no further answer, feel free to supplement, otherwise I'll go to my next area of questioning, which relates to what the impact would be. Some of my fellow committee members seem to come back to this notion that properties don't disappear if, if they were to be sold on the back of burdensome or unsuitable legislative change. Some people keep coming back to the notion that, well, the property doesn't disappear, so it's sort of nothing to see here, nothing to worry about. But, but I want to take you to page 12, I found this quite compelling, of the Property Investors Council submission. And what this speaks to is the very clear contrast between Victoria and Western Australia. And this is ABS lending data. So this is the, if I, I just want to clarify, if I've understood this correctly, and this is very current data from the Australian Bureau of Statistics that says, how much borrowing has there been for housing finance for investment purposes, namely for rental properties? And you can see in Victoria, over three years, 4% and you can see in Western Australia, 160%. And those numbers, I don't think tell a lie. Can I just invite you to unpack that? Some of my committee members with respect will say, well, correlation is not causation and so on and so forth, but that is a compelling set of statistics and I'd invite your remarks, please, further.
Yes, again, thank you, Mr James. In terms of, that is unequivocal in regards to what we've been talking about in the tens of billions of dollars that are at risk of future investment into New South Wales or into other states and territories. Investors, small business property investors have become more attuned to borderless investing, technology, buyers, agents, those abilities to actually invest their money interstate. And we know that there's obviously a lot of activity happening over in Western Australia. Now, I bring to that point that imagine if that investment in future supply didn't arrive, just how difficult that Western Australian market would be, considering that they still have vacancy rates of just over 1%. So I think it's, it's a very clear indication that, you know, ultimately it's a choice from these small business operators as to where they place their money and how they invest or divest of their current portfolio or interests in property. And I think that is what we're talking to here. We're not talking about 50% of the market drying up overnight, but we are talking about tens of thousands of properties at risk. And to the question earlier about the evaporation of properties, that is true, that property does not evaporate, but it is not a one-for-one exchange. We need to understand the dynamics of the marketplace. Let me give you a very simple example. If you've got a share house with three tenants in that property and one of those have worked very hard to save for deposit and buy their first home, ultimately that share house still stays in the marketplace, but that new property is obviously then absorbed one of the existing properties that may be available. And that was evidenced also in a presentation recently delivered by the Reserve Bank Governor, Deputy Governor, who talked about the, the population size inside properties. And I bring to the attention of the committee in terms of a chart that was shared that sourced ABS data that by, from 1911 to 2021, the persons per household has gone from around four and a half people per household to 2.3 people per household. But we are going to see an increase as rents continue to rise because of lack of supply, those rents will grow and we will see, you know, that one-for-one exchange doesn't happen. So the property doesn't evaporate, but in terms of the dynamics of the market adjust to the economic circumstances. So we will see less available rental property and we will see more people in share accommodation based on the affordability. And that is the risk of, you know, giving the choice to the small business owner of where they invest their money.
And Mr Kingsley, I think in relation to that, we'll also see as a result of the , the growing cost of rents, more and more dangers in terms of overcrowding as well, where we see people living in much more overcrowded spaces because people can't afford on their income to be able to rent one room. And so we see them renting or hot bedding in the inner city because rents are so astronomically high. The member for Willoughby, did you have another question?
I have two further questions.
Go for it and then I'll go to the member for Parramatta.
Number one, New South Wales Labor in bringing forth its positions and with respect to Greens too, both have pointed to the reforms of Queensland and Tasmania. Sorry, I beg your pardon, the reforms of ACT in South Australia, ACT in South Australia to be crystal clear, both of which I think have either just come in or ACT might have come in last year. I just wanted to invite any feedback, comments, insights, observations or otherwise that you would make in respect of those jurisdictions. It's probably too early to be sort of pointing to market effects, but some people here in New South Wales say, well, we can do it, no worries because other people are doing it. I think the Victorian example is really quite stark and I've just spoken to that. But, but any observations, please, that you have on ACT in South Australia would be helpful.
And if I can ask, given the time, if you can do the briefly, but really happy to take extra on questions on notice, because I'm conscious that the member of Parramatta hasn't asked and you had another one as well, the member for Willoughby. So just to say, if we all be aware of time, that would be great.
The only thing that I would say to that is, you're right with the data, you know, none of this stuff happens overnight and it does take quite some time for the data to flow through. What's interesting with our research last year in regards to Victoria was the fact that, you know, investors were very negative about Victoria, but this was actually before the new land tax regime came into Victoria. So that was mainly based on a raft of rental reforms that happened at that, leading up into that point of time.
And, and my comment on ACT, it's predominantly a no-go area for the land tax costs. Anyone needs to model out land tax, it gets absolutely exhaustive in the ACT. So it really, you know, they will struggle to attract future investment into that particular market outside of units. And in terms of the South Australian legislation, we're deeply concerned about the provision for being forced to sell a property with a tenant in place. That, that in itself is really damaging financially potentially for the, for the small business owner as well. That is just crazy legislation and I think once that legislation becomes more, more well-known, I think you will start to see more hesitancy in terms of investment into that particular marketplace.
Thank you. And of course, given the limited time that I've had and you've had to answer, please feel free to add to any of these in supplementarys. My final question pertains to a report that so many submissions to date to this committee has raised, the Ahurri Report of 2022, by which we're effectively told by a range of stakeholders coming to this committee that there's not going to be any likely consequence and property owners are, you know, very unlikely to be responsive to this potential legislative change. And, and I think one of your submissions has sort of hit this on the head, as I've tried to do with respect as well, to say, well, that report was actually referencing and analysing data from two jurisdictions well, well before any changes to no grounds evictions. And I think it is barely, barely referable as a credible point for arguments to be made on these matters. Can I just invite your comments on that, just because it has come up and it is quoted in so, so many submissions of those who are absolutely in support of what is in front of us as a committee?
Yeah, I'd like to add to that. Thank you again, Mr James. In terms of, we've debunked a lot of the inconsistencies and relevance of that report based on the bonds data, which only went up to 2020. So you've got to remember, a lot of the tenancy reforms started to begin from March of 2020 and beyond. And so to look back and say that there's been no impact, and then obviously we all need to now just simply look at the graph we've got in our report referencing the impact of tenancy bonds that are occurring right now in Victoria, and they are falling off a cliff, 15,000 less properties in the last 12 months alone demonstrates that that data cannot be relied upon.
Mr Kingsley, can I just ask to clarify, because you just-
Can I just finish the question?
No, I just wanted to ask, because you've said you've debunked a lot of that and I just wondered if you can provide on notice the research or details of where that's been debunked. I'd really, I'd really appreciate that.
I'd appreciate it if these witnesses were not interrupted so often.
Let's not make it something that it's not, member for Willoughby. Go for it, Mr Kingsley.
Just let them finish.
Sorry, Chair, just, just to be clear, Chair, it's actually in the report. We, we go, we take on task, that report is basically being outdated and we, we raise our grounds inside there in more detail, so I refer you back to our report. In respect of the, sorry, I have lost my train of thought now. What was, what were we talking about? What was, what were we talking about, the?
The Ahurri Report and its credibility or timeliness or otherwise.
That's right. The, the inside there referenced that 47% of, of people, and I've heard this also being quoted a lot, that, that just say that tenancy reforms has no impact on their position. Now, they didn't understand what sort of tenancy reforms could come in, i.e. minimum standards, i.e., you know, animals, i.e. minor alterations, i.e. all of these types of things. So when you're collecting that data way back when, and then you're starting to see the unintended consequences of that, you know, those new law reforms coming through, including the increased operating and holding costs that then ultimately get passed on to, to the, to the tenant, it's difficult to say that. But even if 47% said it's unimportant for them or irrelevant for them, 53% are basically telling you that they're aware of it. So again, I refer back to, this is not about everyone leaving the market, but your question that you're asking yourself, is it going to be 20,000? Is it going to be 50,000? Or is it going to be 100,000 households, i.e. 2%, 5% or 10% where that money is going to be redirected to other markets?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. And now I'll go to the member for Parramatta.
Thank you, Chair. Well, after what you've, what we've just had asked, it's probably quite, quite relevant that I ask this question that I've been sitting on for a while. So in relation to the Australian Housing and Urban Research Institute report, they talk about mum and dad landlords and why they sell their rental investments. And it states that only 14% of investors surveyed nominated dissatisfaction with tenancy laws as very important in their decision to sell. What it states is that 50%, 50%, 50% say it's a good time to sell and realise capital gains, 47% wanting money for another investment, 36% rental income was insufficient, 35% maintenance costs being too great. But 14% was, was significantly lower than those other reasons. Would you like to expand on that? And seeing as though you've already spoken on this, maybe if I hand it over to you from PIPA, if you'd like to speak on this.
Sorry, just to clarify, that research is the same one we were talking about from 2020?
No, this is, it actually says 2022. It's in a publication by a re, but it was done by, yeah, yeah.
It's, sorry, just.
I really wanted you just to comment on the, only, it states that only 14% of investors surveyed nominated dissatisfaction with tenancy laws as very important in their decision to sell.
I think it's, yeah, I think I did answer that.
Yeah, that's what I really want to focus on. What is, what are you?
Yes. Well, I mean, and I will have to provide more information, but an answer to a previous question today, I, I didn't, you know, say that even our own, our own research in 2022 found that the number one reason why investors were selling were to make the most surprising market conditions. So it depends on who is doing the research, I suppose, it depends on the questions that are being asked. I'm happy to provide this to the committee afterwards, the variety of questions that we ask of investors in regards to their selling activity, their selling intentions for the year ahead. But, you know, as I say, in 2022, the number one reason why investors were selling was not because of rental reforms. It was because markets were, were strong. I don't actually know, in regards to the research that we did in 2022, how, how, how further up some of the other answers were. But certainly last year, 47% of investors, of those investors who have sold said that they were predominantly selling because of the, you know, increasing government charges and dues, but also changing tenancy legislation. And, and as I mentioned before, you know, the, the market conditions was much further down the, down the list of reasons because market conditions were very flat at the time.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Ms Davis, would you like me to also provide a quick response?
Yeah, if you'd like to, yes, yes.
Yep. So 14% based on a million properties in New South Wales is 140,000 properties that may potentially be falling into that category of those people who take serious intent around that type of rental reform. And I, and I, and I've read that report extensively and I've made many, many comments in regards to the questionnaire inside that report, which was done prior to a lot of rental reforms going on right around the country. So the sensitivity that Nicola speaks to, and in terms of the confidence that's now being possessed, is also then showing up in the ATO data in terms of the actual number of individual property investors across Australia is on the decline. So I think that's really important to also clarify there. So we agree that this isn't going to stop everyone from investing in New South Wales. But the question for you and for those people looking for future tenancy in New South Wales, if that supply is constrained, that is based on the decisions of these small business operators in terms of where they put their money or where they divest their money from.
Okay, thanks. And just one quick question, if you can be brief, and you're happy to take it on notice. But my colleague, Mr Barr, mentioned about having a register of renters. And I know that the Chair also mentioned, you know, the challenges of not having, sorry, not of renters, of landlords or investors, but particularly landlords, I think is a more, sorry, I'm not, I'm not adverse to the Lord bit because having been a Lord Mayor and not a Lady Mayor, I'm, I'm, I'm used to. But a register of landlords. I've met with, with significant number of renters in recent times. And one of the proposals put forward by some of them was, you know, we do need a register of landlords. Have you ever given consideration to the need for landlords to potentially have an ABN or some type of, you know, registration so that we are able to keep track of, of what's happening in this space?
I'm data led, so I love collecting data and I love making decisions based on data. And so having the idea of tracking who's an investor, which property is an investor, having the idea that if there was an eviction or, you know, in terms of the story around what that, building that data before we then start making legislation, I think is a terrific way to go. You know, in, in terms of building up and, and making informed decisions as opposed to, you know, the current situation we find ourselves in.
Sorry to cut you off, I just wanted, yeah, just wanted to get, because I know we're conscious of time.
Think as well, you know, obviously state governments, it's within their power to create such a, such a database and it certainly would make it easier to communicate any of these changes directly to investors. At the moment, they are reliant on, you know, the, the professionals that they work with, often their property managers, to pass on this information because governments make, you know, a raft of changes and actually have no way apart from perhaps the media of communicating it to the people that it affects the most. And while I am mindful of time, I can't help but to say that, you know, the hearings of the last few days, and we are very thankful of being here, I, I do recognise that there's been 25 representatives from tenants and there's just three of us from property owners, so.
If I can, Ms McDougall, if I can, if I can make that just really, really clear in terms of the representation of submissions that were made, that is reflective of the submissions of organisations that were received. The committee is only in its capacity to, to reach out and reflect what is engaged. And I guess, given the evidence that we've seen by Mr Kingsley here today and submitted, it appears that most landlords actually don't intend and, and don't want to use no grounds evictions. And so therefore a change to tightening that up actually probably won't have a lot of effect on them. And so maybe that's why we've seen that level of change, but yeah.
Not quite what I said, Chair, but thank you.
And, and then agreed, agreed. While it might be seen as a minor change, I guess we'll all find out whether that proves to be the case in the next year or two.
Indeed, indeed. Thank you all.
Chair, just respectfully, can I ask Ms McDougall to take on notice, if you don't mind? How many people responded to the survey that you put out? You, you might know that number off the top of your head.
About 1,750.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Thank you all very much. And can I just acknowledge that we have gone over time and thank you for your appearing today and for taking the extra time. I'm pleased that we were able to have over an hour to discuss and hear from you and your perspectives in this session. And I wanted to also let you know that a copy of the transcript will be provided to both of you so that you can provide any corrections on any facts or errors in that that are required. And in addition, the questions that you have taken on notice will be sent to you in writing by the committee secretariat so that you'll be able to respond to those. And we're asking if responses can come through within the next week so that we can deal with a very high or tight timeline, I'll say, set for us by the parliament in relation to this inquiry, given things are moving quickly. So thank you both very much for your time and thank you for appearing today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.